We do have additional chairs over here. If you'd like to pull those, you can pull those over here and set them up and maybe be a little bit more comfortable. Evening and welcome to tonight's March 24th City Council meeting. We are going to start off with Pledge of Allegiance if everybody would stand and if you would remain standing, and Mr. Jim Jenkins will be giving us our invocation for this evening.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we just humble ourselves before you this day. We're just thanking you for your love. We thank you for your continued provision. We thank you that you care about each one of us. We thank you for each one that's here tonight and just ask a special blessing upon each one. As the city conducts their business tonight, may it be in an honoring way and that you just direct our thoughts and that there'll be unity and just guide us in our spirits and may we be doing what's best for our city. We pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Okay, we do have some proclamations. You're unfortunately not the first up tonight, so. We do have three proclamations we're going to be giving out this evening. The first one is for Seven Days. I think we do have some representatives. Tim, are you the only person from?
It's just me today, yes.
Okay. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and the organization?
Sure. Thank you. I'm Tim Osborne. I'm a part of Seven Days Organization. It is a great organization in Kansas City that was born out of some very hateful acts that works really hard to spread kindness and awareness all around. It works with youths in schools in Kansas City and the surrounding areas, providing scholarships, resources for kids and teachers in the area. You can find out more at seven days dot org. We have a fundraising breakfast coming up on Wednesday, April 2nd. There's some kindness cards over there and bookmarks that has a reading list of books that kind of help spread our message. The kindness cards will take you to our website and it also, you can hand them out as well. When people do kind acts in your life, feel free to, what we call Carry On The Ripple as you spread those kindness cards around the city. So, just wanted to say thank you to the city and the organization for having us. We really appreciate everything y'all do. So, thank you for having us.
And remain. Thank you, Tim. Proclamation. Whereas Seven Days Make A Ripple Change The World has a mission to overcome hate by promoting kindness and understanding through education and dialogue. And whereas Seven Days has a vision to make a ripple to change the world by connecting communities and whereas Seven Days 2024 begins its events on Wednesday, April, that should have been 2025, I bet, begins its events on Wednesday, April 2nd with the Kindness Breakfast. And whereas Seven Days continues its daily themes of love, discover, others, connect, you, go in onward to bring people together to overcome hate with acts of kindness. And whereas the memories of three wonderful and unique people, Reed Underwood, Dr. William Corporan, Corporan, and Terry Lamone, Lamono, will be honored through kindness, understanding. And whereas Seven Days expands its acts of compassion, acceptance, and understanding to those who gather. And whereas the city of Bonner Springs fully supports and encourages all residents, businesses, organizations, and visitors to come together during the seven days to act more kindly and more understanding of differences, thereby making the world a better place one ripple at a time. Now therefore, I, Tom Stevens, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2025 through April 8th, 2025, as seven days of kindness in Bonner Springs and urge all citizens to engage in acts of kindness throughout the week and remember the events of April 13, 2014, not only for the losses of that day, but also for the significance of the powerful and enduring vow to overcome hate and kindness. Thank you, Tim. Is there anybody from the library here? Oh, there we go. And would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Leslie Lard. I'm the Youth Services Librarian at Bonner Springs Library, and we appreciate being recognized every year for National Library Week and please keep supporting our library.
Whereas National Library Week highlights the valuable role libraries, librarians, and library workers play in transforming lives and strengthening our communities. And whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. And whereas libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. And whereas the libraries empower job seekers and lifelong learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities. And whereas librarians nurture young minds, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. And whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week under the theme Drawn To The Library. Now therefore, I, Tom Stevens, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April 6th through 12th, 2025, in Bonner Springs, Kansas, and encourage all residents to visit their library, explore resources, and allow themselves to be drawn to the library. And I think we finally hit the last one. Mr. Jenkins, is there anybody else who would like to come up here with us?
First of all, I'm gonna say, is there anybody in the audience that served in Vietnam or was in the military during the Vietnam era? Anybody?
Yeah, we got a couple of council members.
I know we got two council members. Nobody in the audience? Okay. Yeah, it's been a long time. You wanna pull out one of those for, they're both era. Bob isn't gonna, is Bob coming down?
Oh, he said he wasn't.
I, I didn't. We're honoring even those that served during that time. I knew you didn't go. Bob joined the garden, ended up in my hometown, Sibetha, Kansas, but he joined after they were already home from Vietnam, so he missed going. So that's how close he came to going. But anyway, I just want to mention that Vietnam War, to this date, ended in 1975 when they withdrew the final troops, when they evacuated the embassy in Saigon. And so that was the last time there was any troops there. I was there in 1970, John?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight. And so, you know, we both served, but I know that Shannon, you'd never been in Vietnam, were you? I didn't think you were, but you served during that time. Yeah. Okay. Do you have one of those pins for? We got pins that are for 75th, for the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, and we got some that have an emblem on them. If you were in Vietnam, you would get that one. If you just served during that time, you would get the other one. But we want to recognize all because what, what people don't realize is of all the military forces, only about 30% actually went to Vietnam. And of that 30%, not all of them actually was involved in combat. They was even in support there. So even these individuals was an important part of our military strength during that time.
And would you like to explain a little bit about the poppy as a?
Okay, the Buddy Poppies. World War I, okay. There was a Sergeant McCray, or a Major McCray, who had, they'd had some severe battles that lasted several days, and there was many that died during that time, and there was crosses everywhere. And a Buddy, the Poppies was saying a flower that would lay dormant in the ground for a long, long time. But because of the bombs and everything else that stirred up the ground, that next morning after all cleared, Buddy Poppy shot up everywhere. And he wrote the poem that's in Flanders Fields. And it, and he actually threw it in the trash when he first wrote it, but someone else rescued it and then it was published, and now it's a well-known poem to this day.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Whereas throughout our nation's history, servicemen and women of the United States Armed Forces have faithfully defended the Constitution, the principles of freedom, and have worked for the advancement of human rights and democratic ideas in our state, nation, and around the world. And whereas, March 29th marks the day in 1973 when all US ground troops departed Vietnam. Only US Embassy personnel and support staff remained in South Vietnam until the fall of Saigon on April 30th, 1975. Whereas from February 1961 to May of 1975, more than 3.4 million American service, served in support of US military operations in Vietnam and Southeast Asia. More than 58,000 gave their lives and nearly 1,500 servicemen remain unaccounted for, according to the Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency. Whereas this day is set aside for Americans to recognize every American war veteran, including those who are still unaccounted for. And whereas, we can never forget the debt we owe these men and women who have loyally served our nation in battle and must never take for granted their contributions and sacrifices. And whereas the residents of Bonner Springs have a tremendous amount of pride for our Vietnam veterans and military personnel for courageously representing our country. And therefore, I, Thomas A. Stevens, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, do hereby recognize March 29th, 2025, as Veteran War, uh, sorry, Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Day, and encourage the residents of Bonner Springs to join together to honor all Vietnam War and era veterans of America's Armed Forces. Bob, get in here. Continuing with tonight's agenda, the first item up would be the citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. This is a time for the public, opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary, and with the consensus of the city council placed on a future agenda. Again, this is for not, items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone, anyone who wishes to speak to the council? Seeing none, we will then go ahead and move on. Oh, did somebody raise their hands over here? Oh, please, I'm sorry. I didn't see him. At the base of the mic, you'll see a button. Just tap it.
I'm Julia Parker. I live at 12520 Kansas Avenue in Bonner Springs, Kansas, and I would like the city to consider a traffic study on Kansas Avenue from approximately the stop sign behind Walmart, which is at about 129th Street, to the east to 122nd Street, and along 122nd Street to the intersection that would reach Riverview Avenue. I've noticed an increase in very large amounts of traffic, and also the speed at which that traffic goes up and down Kansas Avenue, and 122nd is a hazard to the residents that live on those areas. And so I would like the city to consider having some changes to make that a safer area for people, as people use it as a thorough fare to get to the Legends or to the Ren Fest or a shortcut.
I will, we'll have the staff look into that and see if, along with the police department probably to, to look and see what maybe, if there is an issue there that we could address or not. So, thank you, Ms. Parker. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, then we will move on with the consent agenda. If a council member has a simple question about any item, they can ask the mayor, ask before the mayor calls for a vote on the consent agenda. Any item, an item only needs to be removed if it warrants discussion. So, is there anything that we have on the night's consent agenda? It is minutes of the February 24th City Council meeting, claims for city operations, public use requests for a citywide cleanup for closing of 138th Street, and then a massage therapy business establishment and massage therapist license. Is there anything the staff wishes to uphold? Is there any item the citizens wish to uphold? Counsel? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mayor Stevens, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is presented here.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Ms. Woods. All those in, uh, we'll go ahead and call for the roll. Go ahead and record the vote, please.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That will bring us on to new business. We have SUP 0125, Special Use Permit, for 1800 South 122nd Street, eight through 800 South 118th Street by APAC, Kansas Incorporated, Bonner Springs Quarry. Did you wish to? No, might not be the time to do.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Mark. After speaking with the mayor and our city manager, we've agreed on for me to recuse from this topic. I am also the chamber director, and the president of our chamber works for Holiday Sand, and they're one of our top sponsors for Thiblo Days. So we all agree that that is a conflict of interest, so I am recusing myself from discussion and voting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. We'll start down here. Ms. Brake, did you want to talk first?
Yes.
On the side, before we have staff?
Just wanted to clarify some things before we start the discussion about the special use permit. Staff consulted with the city attorney, and we have, council has four options this evening when you're listening to this. The first option is to approve the staff recommendation for a 12-month renewal on the SUP. This is the option that's presented in the agenda. The second option would be to approve the planning commission's recommendation, which was a 20-year renewal. The third option would be to deny the item. The fourth option would be to send it back to the planning commission. Couple of caveats to that. If you send it back to the planning commission, you must specify a reason to the planning commission. You're sending it back to them for a specific reason. And understand that that will have, that if you do that, there's no way to get that back in front of the council before the current special use permit expires. So, that would, that would have quite an impact on the company. Also, wanted to make sure everyone is aware that I did receive a protest petition. It was submitted to the city clerk's office prior to the 14-day deadline. The city notified 22 residents of the hearing. The protest petition was signed by 14 of them, so that's 64%, plus an additional six residents in that area that were outside of the notification area. So, I verified those signatures as the owners of those properties. We also received, or I received, was copied on multiple emails from at least seven residents that I know communicated with the council members. So I just wanted to kind of make that overall ex parte clarification right there. And then also wanted to let you all know that because the item is technically a mining operation, the protest petition does not force a specific vote. It's just a straight majority vote, regardless of how you decide which option you take. And that's all I have.
This would be a good time then for also for council to proclaim any, any ex parte communications or other conflicts that they, they may have encountered. I think as a whole, the council has received, I think, multiple calls and emails from residents who live north of the impacted area. I think if, I assume every one of the council would agree that they've received communications from them. If there's any additional communications you've received from anyone, this would be a good time to bring, to put that on the record. Someone outside that northern area of residents. Okay. With that then, we, I might also mention a little bit, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought, I'm sorry. Real quickly, we thought I would mention, when it comes to the, just for, I know the council knows this, but I know there's so many people in attendance who may not have, may not be sure about how the process works. When it comes to the council, at that point in time, when we ask for a motion, it, first of all, there'll be, there'll be a motion put on the table in a second. That motion is not necessarily the motion that will follow through to the very end. We do, we do prefer to follow LKM recommendations, which says that we should have a motion on the floor before any council discussion. If a, if a council member wishes to, and the council as a whole concurs that they wish to have that motion maybe either withdrawn or possibly amended, those are things that can happen during the course of it. Also, individual making the motion or seconding the motion does not obligate them to vote in favor of the motion. So I just don't want people to think immediately because somebody made the motion, that means they're voting for it. With that, I will go ahead and do a quick overview. That's the planning commission, commission held a public meeting on February 25th. The action tonight is quasi-judicial. Therefore, council members shall only consider the findings and facts forwarded by the planning commission from the public hearing they held. I know that's been a little frustrating for those who wanted to reach out and wanted to really have a good discussion with the council members. Unfortunately, it, this is an item, when it's quasi-judicial, we have to refrain from having a public discussion where we are expressing opinions. Hopefully everybody understands that and considers that. The commanding, the planning commission's public hearing was the appropriate place for public comment. No public comment from the audience will be accepted tonight. I know that I was contacted about this item and assume council members were also contacted by constituents. So with that, then we will turn it over to Mr. Lee for presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Mark Lee, Community Development Director. Say it again. We're here this evening to look at a special use permit for APAC, Kansas, and to continue the operation of the Bonner Springs Rock Quarry. That rock quarry has been in existence since 1907, and from what I could find, had not received any special use permits until 1993, I believe, was the first one that was issued. That one was issued for 10 years, and then there was a two-year, an additional two years put on that as some transitioning was going on. And then in 2005, another one was issued for 20 years, which brings us to today. The, the ordinance that's in front of you did have that 20-year stipulation with the concerns from the residents, and in discussions with APAC themselves, there's some agreeances between everybody, or at least on APAC's side, to come back to the table with some different conditions that may be more agreeable to some of the residents. So that's why we're kind of kicking this for a year, and then I actually have a public hearing, again, set up for next month to bring them back through the process, to add these stipulations in, and, and see if there's any others that, that are reasonable that could be put in. But as of now, I've got a, a list of a couple other ones, two or three more that APAC would agree to, and, and we'll see how that pans out. But that is really all I have.
I was gonna say, do you have those additional stipulations you're talking about at the planning commission level?
So I do, and I mean, I haven't put them into a final form, but there was some concerns about, from, from APAC's standpoint, and, and again, I'm not a mining expert, so I'm relying on some of this information that was, that was transferred to me. But weather conditions play a lot into the blast factors, and if the, the ceiling level we'll say is low, and they do a blast, that keeps the air pressure down low, which causes more individuals to, to feel that. So what they've put in here is that they're, they're, they're willing to contract with a local weather service to provide better, better weather conditions for their blasting, wind conditions along with that. They have agreed, I know, to work with some of the neighbors outside of any of my processes on some of their issues. Blasting on Saturdays would, would go away. And then there, they have agreed to a, a larger setback from structures that they do not own. As it stands now, it's 500 feet around a lot of the perimeter. On some of the unpopulated sides, it drops down to 200. So what they're suggesting is, is that they'll stay at least 600 feet away from any dwelling.
Any other staff input at all? If not, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to approve the special use permit for APAC, Kansas Incorporated, for 1800 South 122nd Street and 800 South 118th Street for the term of 12 months.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Mr. Shannon. We'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Shannon.
Mark, you mentioned something that helped me out here on a month from now or approximately that this was going to be re-looked at with, with the families and with APAC.
My notification timeframe is, is I believe Thursday of this week to send my letters out. Publication has already been made in the paper, but it will be in the April Planning Commission Agenda.
Okay. And what does that? Okay. And what does that, what does that look like?
It will include some more stipulations onto the ordinance that you're looking at currently, but it will, it will, I mean, in all reality, probably revert back to the same timeframe of 20 years, knowing that council has the option to revoke that at, at almost any time upon violations. So, I mean, that, that's kind of a broad term to say violations, but we do have that right as the, or you do as the governing body to revoke that special use permit.
And will the families at that meeting have an opportunity to speak also?
It would be the same format as previous. It will be a public hearing, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and for the report and appreciate the multiple emails and phone calls I've received. No, I'm sorry. That is, that is how this system works. We're here to represent you and, and go through that. But I think I've got 10 emails from different people and, and multiple phone calls. So, that, wanna make sure that we're hearing those things, even if it ends in disagreement. We wanna make sure those things are on the table and, and, and out front. Explain that, that, the SUP portion of it as far as revoking for any reason. I assume that's a little too broad of a term, but.
Yeah, it's written in there. There's violations of the Unified Development Ordinance and violations of the ordinance itself. I'll have to find the exact language. I'm sorry. Revocation of special use permit may occur for a violation of the Unified Development Ordinance or violation of any or all of the conditions set out in this special use permit. So, any blasting outside of the, any work outside of the timeframe that they have, any of the 18, 17, I guess, other stipulations that are in there.
So, it's spelled, spelled out in there as far as what they.
Yes. Yeah, number two addresses that.
Okay. And I'm glad to hear that they're working on the, the distances, because that would seem to be a common theme involved in there. Also, can you expand a little bit about the landfill act? I mean, that is mentioned multiple times. The possibilities are non. I've heard kind of different things that.
So, in the, I've been here now four and a half years almost, and that was one of the main things that I'd always kept hearing was, we don't want that to turn into a landfill since it was owned by Devon Ball at the time. And so, that was what I had heard a lot of, of opinions about. So, that was just a stipulation that, that I put in. There's actually no allowed use in our table of uses for that anyways. But I thought that that would be a good stipulation to put in, knowing that moving forward when they're done, it, it won't turn into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Garland?
Ready? I got questions. You said there's, there was no special use permit until 1996?
Three, I think, was what I could find.
Is that because special use permits were not a thing at that time?
I didn't research into that depth, but that's kind of my thoughts.
Okay.
Or it wasn't, yeah, that would be more my thoughts.
And there have not been any violations or citations on that property as relates to the mining organization? How, why do, how do our standards differ from some of the surrounding areas and why?
Well, I mean, I guess some of that could be the uses that we already had in existence. And as I, as I stated, this quarry has been in existence since 1907. So, it's, it's not anything really new. And I think it's kind of something that the city has worked with and around in a way.
Okay.
But some of the newer ones that have come forward have had some timeframes placed on them. But they're, again, they're within the past 30 years, some of them. I do have some information from A-PAC concerning their other quarries and how they're not really limited by special use permits or timeframes at that. Let's see. If you'd like to know some of those, I'll, yeah. So, there was a two-year time limit in Olathe at one time because they were actually redoing their entire zoning regulations. So, that was put on them at that time, but it's since changed and it's gone to seven years. There is Johnson County aggregates in Olathe has no sunset clause. They're allowed to mine until all the rock is gone. They have one in Stanley. The West Quarry in Overland Park is an approved non-conforming grandfathered use, so it has no expiration. They operate one in Gardner in Johnson County, and it does not have a special use that, that limits their timeframe as well. Most of the mining operations, at least from my understanding, are really controlled by the federal government and the state more than cities as far as their blasting limits and their control methods and dust control and things like that. So, you know, I, I, I did not dig into a bunch of the surrounding communities' regulations to see what they placed, but that's, that's some of the differences is age.
Okay. Thank you. My understanding is that this new phase is subsurface rather than on-surface?
So, they, they're, they're already approved for operations up in the northeast section of their property, which is where they're going into now. We worked with FEMA to get them across Mission Creek and some other things. And they're mining in that now. Their subsurface mining would come at a later date, but it would be, from my understanding, in the existing quarry pit that they have now.
Oh, okay. Okay. My questions are out of order because that's where my brain works. I saw it somewhere. The blasting and the air quality are all monitored by federal governing bodies and those are all within the acceptable limits. They've not exceeded those in any way.
No. No, and that was in a presentation that they gave at the public hearing that I, I did include in your packets. There's seismic graph readings and things like that.
Thank you. And one of the comments in here was about portable crushers, portable asphalt plants, portable concrete mixers. How often are those utilized? Do we?
They have a crusher on site and I believe it works more or less constantly. I hate to rely on.
I don't have it open because it said it would, those would require approval, prior approval. So, that we're, we're allowing for one full-time?
Yeah, it, I'm, I think from what I understood, it used to move around their site. And I think now it's pretty much just set up right, right where they do their operations.
Okay. And the only access point that you're, that is utilized to get to the quarry is 121st Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think I'm done for now. Thank you.
Ms. Wood? Mike, please.
Yes. I had an interesting, just looking at these words. The proposed special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is to be located. Substantial is such an interesting word. We don't have anything that tells us how big it's going to be. And I think that's, that's, to me, is a very big worry. And also, it will not dominate the neighborhood so as to prevent development and we, and, and use of neighborhood property is in accordance with the applicable zoning just regulation. But they've already, I have heard that there's somebody that already has pictures falling off the wall and things like this. And I think that that is a very big concern. And I, I honestly feel that we ought to find out the details of that and that people who have the problems should be able to come to the council, should be able to come to the planning commission and should make, make those things okay in their mind or what we do is going to be okay in their mind. That's all.
Mr. McMahon?
Mr. McMahon. Mark, thanks for all you're doing. Interesting. Okay, just, we'll, we'll make a decision. We, we were given four options, right? I wrote those down. And then you had mentioned that you guys are gonna meet again, planning commission will, right, in April? And it would be an, an open hearing for the most part. So, constituents that live in that community can come back and make their compelling cases. Given that they came once and made compelling cases, doesn't necessarily mean a second meeting would change the mind of the planning commission just based on how you guys arrive at your decisions. It's amoral. It's not philosophical, right? You, you're looking at things from a legalistic perspective, right? There's, A-PAC is significant to the community and so is our constituents. So, now we gotta, where do we land with this? And my thought is that, okay, well, let me say something to the constituents. I learned from a wise man that whenever you're in an area, it's always good to investigate, especially when you're close to, you're in the city limits. And some of the things, one of the things you might want to do is inquire with, especially when there's land, there could be rezoning agriculture to commercial. Next thing you know, you got apartments being built by, you know, a nice subdivision of some sort. Same thing with this and that area, living close to the A-PAC. It used to be Long Star, is that correct, years ago?
Oh, years ago.
Yeah, way back in the day. And knowing that there is a possibility that that place is gonna continue to grow. So, that's one of the things you keep in mind. But having said that, one of the things I think we need to do is take to heart what our constituents are saying and try to find something. You know, listen, we don't want to shut down A-PAC, but we can make modifications to the blasting, right? And, and if we make that decision, how do we vote on that tonight to allow you guys to go back and get clarification on what A-PAC's willing to do? So, that way, we're not, it's not necessarily a, a deny, right? I guess it would be a send it back. But what was the, what was the caveat if we send it back? They're, they're not.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I can help answer that. So, if you send it back, then with a reason, then the planning commission would have a discussion on whatever reason you send it back to them to discuss. And then it would come back to you all either with a revised recommendation or the recommendation stays as it is. The recommendation on your sheets and, and from staff would be to approve the SUP, but for a 12-month period instead of the 20-year period. That way, it has the whole public hearing process again. And A-PAC has already agreed to look at some of these conditions and they've already started working with Mark Lee on that. So, this would give everyone the opportunity to come back to the table with those conditions and with a new hearing. Whereas if you just sent it back, it would not have the same hearing and the same opportunities.
Thank you, Amber, for that. So, and if we approve the 12-month, are those, are there any modifications made, Mark, that you're aware of by A-PAC as far as trying to tamper back the explosions of some sort? That way, it's not creating.
As far as what's in the ordinance in front of you?
Yes, sir.
Not in that one. But that's something we'd look at to, to, in the public hearing portion, to bring back forward with some more conditions. Now, whether the blasting limits would be one or not, I don't, I can't speak to that because there, you know, there, there was some discussion about that during the public hearing, but they were under the federal requirements and, and that was kind of what leads them. So, there was some conversation about that, but I can't say that that would come back as one of the stipulations.
Okay. And if, once you guys have your meeting in April, will it come back to council?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that, all the questions I had. Thank you.
Ms. Wong?
So, this, what we're voting on tonight is basically getting us through so that it doesn't expire the current SUP so that they can have a public hearing? Okay. Just wanna make sure I understood that correctly. I wrote down the things that you said were being considered for coming back to the table. But are there other things being considered like dust control or some of the other things that residents have brought up as concerns as well as, I think there was some mention of aircraft or things like that that have been going through. So, is any of that under consideration as well?
Those two items are, are not of A-PAC's doing.
Okay.
And that was, that was discussed in the public hearing at the planning commission. But the, there was concerns and there's helicopter flights. And what we found out was it's Army National Guard and they have some sort of contract with Devon Ball, who is the owner right now, that they can do these flights. A-PAC is, is, let's see, they're, they are willing and more than, more than willing to stop those flights. They are very much a nuisance from what I understand. Actually, was my planning commission vice chair recused himself that evening and showed some videos of what happens right outside his residence. And basically, the helicopters are meteor and they're that high off his property. But it's 700 or 800 feet down, if that makes sense, because they're actually in the quarry, but he sits on the edge. So, the helicopters are right outside. But they can't control that currently, but they're willing to control it once they purchase. So, they're also in the act of purchasing this property from waste or, it's actually waste management now, but through, from Devon Ball. So, they're, they're in the process of doing that currently. There was some concerns about the trains that block 32 Highway, but that has absolutely nothing to do with quarry. That is Boozy, Boozy USA there, this, the other, I think it's a cement factory. But they've done work in the back portion of their property. So, what happens, and, and I, I, I was unclear of how this happened as well. And my main concern was first responders, police, fire, how they get over to that side or mutual aid calls now that we have. And what I found out was it's actually Union Pacific. And as a lot of us know, Union Pacific is as high up the chain as you can get. And Boozy says, we don't even know sometimes when they show up. But I guess what they do is they make train cars back there, they connect them and do all that and move them around and things. And so, they don't even know sometimes when the road will be blocked. Boozy themselves. Union Pacific just give them the call 30 minutes ahead, says, we're gonna be there. And they're like, oh, I don't even have anybody. And they're like, we don't care. So, they do their own thing. And I've found that out through several other instances, including our riverfront trail that we looked at. But there's a lot down the way that's in the flood plain that's owned by the railroad and basically, they can do whatever they want to it. And that surprised me, but that's the railroad. So, those were two of those concerns. The dust mitigation, they, they have requirements that they have to mitigate the dust on their crushers. They do typically water their, their truck routes in and out, and that's where most of the dust comes from. And then with their weather service that they're gonna contract, I believe most of the intent is to make sure the wind is at least still, if not blowing to the south, to eliminate some or more of the dust from the neighboring properties to the north. There are, it's also gonna include, you know, the, the ceiling, I call it the ceiling, but the cap on the air pressure levels and how that can help release them up into the sky.
Okay. Are there any sort of reports or anything that are available for residents that they may or may not be aware of just as far as like, like the goings on there? So, how the blasting, you know, some of the reports that we see here in this packet, for example, where they're at with, with regard to like federal guidelines and are there, I guess, transparent ways that residents can report any potential damage or anything that's happening?
So, they would be required to submit their annual reports to me, but they're also required to, to send them to the federal government and the state. So, that's, but that would, that would have to come through a freedom of information request or, or an open records request to get those from me. But I don't think there's really anything readily available out on the internet or anything. There, there may be some, some mining reports that may be able to be found. I, I'm not sure on that. But those would be about the only reports that the public could get their hands on were the ones that submit to me.
And then as far as concerns with property, anything with regard to property, are there transparent ways for them to contact A-PAC or what do they do in those instances if they have concerns about?
That's, that's gonna be a sticky legal situation that honestly, I don't think we as the city want to be involved in.
Well, isn't, yeah, I'm not asking if the city's involved. I'm just saying, is there, are there transparent ways for them to know what to do?
So, we've had residents reach out to us before and we usually get them in contact with a representative from A-PAC so that they can discuss concerns. And I know that A-PAC has gone out and put additional seismographs on properties before so that they could gather information and talk with the resident about that. So, I know that they have been open to helping people understand and discussions.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for. I think that's all the questions that I have for right now, Mark. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves?
Mr. Reeves?
Yes. It appears to me like if we're to vote on the motion that's on the floor, this would allow everything to move forward and allow the residents to come to a meeting again and discuss these things. And also would allow APEC to continue on forward with what they've got plus what they're working on. So when the dates come up that they're going to have that, I think everybody here needs to know exactly where they can look, find in the next week, two, three weeks, when those are, where they can look this information up of what the dates are, because, you know, like we don't have a newspaper anymore and I know there's websites that the city has that's available and I know we've got bulletin boards, et cetera, on social media and everything, but, you know, we need to be more specific, I think, so that people know where that is. And appreciate that APEC is willing to work with us on this point. There's new mining techniques I know that have come around, 20 years is a long time. And so I think it's good that we review that time schedule. I also know that they've been in business out there, one form or another, for over 100 years. This is one of the reasons we have the 20-year time limit. Usually the new mining operations that have the two, three-year, five-year time limits on their working schedules, you know, whoever they're working with, cities and counties and so forth, but they've been in business here so long that it's finally gotten to the 20 years. That's how that happened. So I understand that, but it looks like we may be at a point where residents need to know a little bit more about what's going on and, and we need to apprise them of a way to find that out possibly better than what we used to, because like you said, we always, many of us are used to having that newspaper and I know it's been gone for years, but we can't seem to find a really good way to pass that on other than informing people where those sites are to look up, who's got that information. So if you would do that...
So I am required to send notification to the residents within 200 feet of the property boundaries and then I'm required to publish it in the newspaper and then I'm also required to post it on site. Unfortunately, when this came around, we had just suffered the blizzard and then another snowstorm and I wasn't able to put the signs out. There was other issues with USPS and this and that, but that's, that's how I am required to notify the public. The meeting is and will be April 15th at 6:30 here and I usually have my agendas and packets posted the 10th or the Thursday or Friday before that meeting date.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I had one more question. Sorry, I got off track. Is APEC willing to consider other modifications? So I know the ones that you listed were here, but if residents have other concerns or if Planning Commission has other things that they take from residents' concerns and want to add to that, are they willing to come to the table for some more of those things? For example, if they, would they be willing to consider bigger setbacks or more than just the 600 feet or things like that? Do you know? Or...
I think increasing the setbacks that much is going to limit their...
I just mean, are they willing to entertain any of those type of suggestions or the things that come to the table or what are we talking about? Were they only these ones that were listed or other things on the table as well?
Those were the ones that, those were the ones that we kind of, that, okay, so, sorry, let me take a breath here.
It's okay, you've got a lot of questions.
The representative from APEC was at both the meetings. He took notes and these were some of the concerns that came out of those.
Okay.
So those were the ones that he wrote down and then chose to address as best he could. I don't think increasing the setbacks is going to be something that, that they look at because of the amount of material that, that they can reclaim or take.
Okay, that's what makes sense, thank you so much.
Yeah.
I know you have questions.
I got a bunch of them, go ahead.
I just have two. The land use, the SUP is written for the business, so it's written for APEC.
Yes.
If the property changes hands, the SUP is then null and void or must be reapplied for, or it does not, just continue on.
There's renaming and things that occur, I've noticed, that don't necessarily change the ownership, financial means.
Correct.
Are you asking if the property changes hands or the company?
The property?
The property.
Well, if the, the SUP is written to the business...
It's, I'm sorry, it also applies to property though because it specifies the addresses that it's listed to, listed as, 1800 and 800. So it's also tied to the properties.
Okay, that, that answers my question and...
And there is, there is a stipulation in there that talks about the, the changing of hands or, or property or, or process, I believe, to tell you the truth.
Okay. I'm going to circle back again because I want to really understand the process. If, if this motion on the floor is approved, which is to approve the ordinance for a term of 12 months, a public hearing is held, any changes that are agreed upon will come back before the council for another vote and an amendment to the SUP.
Correct.
Does that rescind this motion and put a new SUP in place and start the clock over?
I think it would probably rescind the ordinance is where, or not rescind, but, yeah, sorry, can't take it.
Yeah, it would revoke the current one.
Revoke it, yeah.
Thank you. And then the new one would take its place.
So the clock would then start from zero?
Yeah.
At the time of that, okay. And, okay, thank you.
Mark, on the, if it does change...
Go ahead.
We want to understand it, Mr. Mark.
If it does change hands and they sell it in 15 years, the SUP resets, so the provision about the landfill resets. What is the process for a landfill? Does that require a special use permit?
For...
If the new owners have a landfill, want to have a landfill...
They can't. It's not, we don't have that use even in our table.
Okay.
So they would, they would ask for a whole amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to add that use along with the definitions and everything else like I've done for some of the zoning districts we'd set up. They'd have to, we'd have to add all of that into our, our UDO.
And there's, you know, dozens of questions, so to the constituents, I want you to know, I've read every one of them. I'm not asking all of them because there's, obviously they've reset this to evaluate that at this next meeting and I appreciate them being flexible on that, change it to 12 months.
Before the mayor, Mark, before the mayor asks these 47 questions, Mark, on the notification of residents within, at 200 feet, looking at the map that was provided, there's in the existing area around, maybe out, definitely outside of the 200 feet, is that something that we as a city would want to do is allow all the residents that are in that area or encourage all of you to let everybody know out there about this meeting, the 16th?
So the way the state statute is written is you are required, or I am required to notify individuals within 200...
Okay.
If it butts a county line or unincorporated area, you can extend that to 1,000 feet or you have to extend that to 1,000 feet. There was some discussions of, of do we send that notification out to the residents within 1,000 feet? I didn't do the math, but I think we're only going to catch maybe five and no more than 10 more individuals, but regardless, we can, we can do that as well.
Okay, well, I'll leave that up to you and the city manager, but I do encourage and I do appreciate all of you being here and yes, the phone has been ringing and the emails have been coming and I do appreciate it, but please let everybody know in your area about this meeting because your input and what you feel and see is very important. And I have noticed that, I believe it's Dan from APEC, he's been smiling on quite a few of the things and I did notice once or twice where they're, they, obviously from just his expression, I think they want to work with you and this is what I know we want so that, I'm going to stop right there. Mayor, it's all yours.
My turn. Yeah, I just want to circle back to, first item was, I kind of took a little bit of exception on page four of the initial document, that it was the same item, item three that Ms. Woods referenced earlier. And it kind of found it a little disingenuous when it says the proposed special use has not proven to show injury or to neighboring property values and is, and is not expected to. And considering some of the people that spoke at the Planning Commission meeting, especially one resident who lived in a home that was over 100 years and hadn't suffered any major damage until in the last four or five years and they had major structural damage, it's hard to believe that somehow this didn't have some cause. At the same time in the document, I noticed they make reference to having, they want to go lower because they found more as they moved north, which now makes me wonder if as they moved north, is that when we started having more issues of it not being an annoyance and a nuisance, but more of an actual, creating actual hardship for people? And that's my concern is are we getting too far north that even if we, you know, even if we put some restraints on it, is it going to continue to create hardships for some of those individuals who live in that area? So I would hope we do the proper study necessary, just, just because we have a seismic report says only, only shook and, you know, three feet doesn't mean that it doesn't cause damage. So that's my concern. The, when we talk about the subsurface, I know that was brought up. If they go below ground at any point in time, that would not be covered by this SUP, correct? It would require them to actually have come in with a new SUP for subsurface mining?
This, this special use permit would allow them to do that, but they'll have to present us the engineering and the methodology and everything behind that process.
Okay, so it will allow it, but, but it still has to go through the proper process to be approved.
It would still have to be reviewed by everyone, this, I assume the state, the federal, the, our city engineer, you know, it would have to go through all of those before they could just start doing underground, yes.
When it comes to the, the length that everybody was concerned about, and I fully understand it, you mentioned about violations, but what happens if the homeowners continue to experience actual damage, other health issues because of it, but they necessarily aren't a violation? What kind of recourse would we have?
Well...
And that may be a legal question.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of...
I think there's a lot of legal that would have to go into that and a lot of studying...
But you can understand my concern.
Of course I do, yes.
And that's why...
Yeah, and that, the Planning Commission had some of those same concerns. I'm not, I mean, they did not make an easy decision, I'll put, I'll put it that way, but, you know, there's, there's just so many things that can happen during the lifespan of a house and how it gets determined, I know your instance that you spoke about, we kind of know that one, we've, we've spoke about it, but it's, you know, I, I don't know how that would be addressed. It would be more of a legal matter for sure.
Well, and that brings me then back to that length of 20 years. You know, are we better off putting a shorter timeframe, cutting it down so that way if we are experiencing issues, we're not locked into it for, you know, we can at least cut the time in half that we're locked into it. And then they can always come back, I assume there is a cost to go through the process and it's the hassle, but it may be worth it for peace of mind for the constituents to know that there is more of a time limit, a little bit shorter time limit.
Devaluing a property be one of the stipulations that would void the SUP? If you can prove causation?
So what I, what I used when I looked at the devaluation of property was the county records and whether those are skewed or not, nothing's gone down, they've all gone up, every one of them around that area. I mean, that's, you know, the appraised value of the homes were going up and up. So it wasn't that we're next to a quarry and they're staying still or they're going down. So that was what I used. I have no personal knowledge of, of, you know, their, their home sales or value or, or anything like that, so I'm just going off of the records that I could find.
Sure, sure. And I mean, I have, I understand the foundation pain, I've spent an enormous amount of money, I'm not anywhere near that, but it's, you know, to prove causation is the, the more difficult issue and...
I fully understand, correlation, causation are not the same. The, and this may be a question for legal, about how long does it take to go through the process, starting with a new SUP? It's going to come in front in April. Are we talking about overall a two-month, three-month time?
About three months.
You know, so should we, are we okay with 12 months, one year, or would be better off saying the current SU, the SUP were, if we pass it tonight, would it be better if we passed it like six months and put that, lock in a shorter timeframe that they have to be addressed with a new SUP?
We've, I've already got it set up and scheduled for next month, I don't think the 12 months is going to cause any harm, I guess.
I just want to make sure it doesn't get delayed.
No, it's, it's, it's scheduled, it's already in the paper, it's published, said my notifications are set to go out Thursday, it's, it's going.
Now, when it comes to the notification, it's a requirement for 200 feet, but is that a minimum requirement? We can go beyond that, correct? And I know you say it's only going to catch a few more homes, but...
We could.
I'd rather catch everybody within a, the quarry and the type of operation they have is, has much more dramatic effect for a greater distance. It's not like a logistics center or a retail business, it's going to have a greater impact. And so I would prefer, and I don't know if that would have to be a council's decision...
No, I mean, I can, I can do it, that's not an issue at all.
Yeah, I'd rather go ahead and increase that, just to make sure those notifications go out to it.
Yeah, that's fine. And I guess, I'm sorry, you...
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just saying, this is, this isn't, so I guess, this hasn't really been talked about because it's not gone outside of the quarry, but those properties are zoned heavy industrial. So think of what those uses that are allowed. I mean, I'm just going to say it just because, you know, it's, they could be a lot more harmful and we have no control over those. I mean, that's basically heavy industrial, you're manufacturing. I mean, it's, you know, and I'm not, I just want to, I just want that to be known, right? It's not, I know the quarry is very impactful, but with what it's zoned and, and that's, you know, that's where we get to a sticky point, kind of. But yeah, I can definitely send them out to 1,000 feet, that's not a problem. It's, it's the same letter, I just print it out that many times and send them, so, yeah.
And I think, I don't know if Mr. Shannon mentioned about people speaking at a public hearing, but it's not just restricted to those that receive that letter.
No, no.
Anybody from the public is, is allowed to speak on an item in a public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting. I might make this comment for the public as a whole because we talk about getting access to information. We want to be as transparent and open as possible, provide the information you need. Unfortunately, we have to rely on you to also self-initiate and try to grab that information. And there's a couple of things I might point out is we talked about the, the agendas that come out. If you go to the city website and if you sign up, part of signing up, it's free, you will supply an email address and as part of that signup process, you can select to be notified on when agendas get posted for any particular group. So you can do city council, planning commission, any of our other commissions that meet. You can sign up for notifications, so when those agendas get uploaded, you will receive an email that will link you right to that agenda. So that's one way to know that agenda's been up, see if you want to review it. The second item I might mention is on the city agenda. If you look down at the bottom of it under the reports, if you open up the tab for the city managers tab, there are, besides the city managers report, there's several other spreadsheets in there. One of those spreadsheets are the planning commission items in progress. And you can see, you can go right there and you can find anything because the agenda may not be posted yet, but you can find an item there that is coming in front of the planning commission and the date it's planning, it's going to be in front of the planning commission and then when it'll be coming in front of the city council. And that allows you at least within just a few minutes being able to quickly determine if there's something that you wish to have addressed. it's going to be in front of the Planning Commission, and then when it'll be coming in front of the city council. And that allows you at least, within just a few minutes, being able to quickly determine if there's something that you wish to have addressed. The otherwise, is there any other questions, comments? Anything else, anybody else? Okay, so if the, if there's nothing else you need to add, Mr. Sterling?
Glad I've been at a couple weddings, so I could not fall over. No, this is good, all good.
I will have the, so the clerk, if you'll read back the motion that's on the floor, and then we'll call for the vote.
Voting on a motion to adopt an ordinance to approve the special use permit for APEC Kansas, Inc., for 1800 South 122nd and 800 South 118th Street for a term of 12 months. Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, thank you, staff. Onto item number two, memorandum of understanding between the City of Bonner Springs and the Wyandotte County Sheriff's Office for the installation and operation of license plate reader technology at Case 7 in Kansas Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Billy Knaff, Chief of Police, have a request tonight for initiation of a memorandum of understanding with the Wyandotte County Sheriff's Office.
I'm going to have you hold up just a second. I think we have a lot of people who are clearing the room, so we'll let them get cleared out. Okay, Chief, apologize.
No problem. We were contacted by the Wyandotte County Sheriff's Department about a desire that they had to install a license plate reader technology at Case 7 in Kansas for north and southbound traffic. One of our goals within the police department is to add license plate reader technology within the community, specifically at that location. This project that they are funding requires no commitment by the city at this time, or in the future, from what we can tell, and part of it, with their installation, it's intelligence sharing for us is the police department, which allows us to kind of capture some of that information and view it as well, which was a goal of the memorandum. Happy to answer any questions.
Anything else from the staff? Would the residents like to speak on this item at all? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the city manager's sign and initiate the memorandum of understanding, allowing the Wyandotte County Sheriff's Office to install and operate license plate readers.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shannon, and a second by Ms. Gurley, and we'll start down there with you, Mr. Reeves. Any comments, questions?
Turn your mic on.
Is there any issue about privacy to citizens, how this is used?
Operating on a city highway or city street, you have no expectation of privacy.
That's what I was looking for.
No questions, thank you.
What happens when, I, I mean, are you looking for like maybe a license plate of like someone with a warrant?
It, it could be a warrant, it could be stolen vehicles, it could be a vehicle that's been lodged by a investigative agency to, they want somebody there, maybe, maybe it's connection with a homicide or serious crime. It'll send an alert that we can be notified. We also use it for intelligence gathering. Maybe we have an investigation that we're working, and we're looking for a white explorer, and we can go in a timeframe, we can look at all the white explorers that went through there, get a tag, and start our investigative process that way.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Ms. Mac Mahan?
I can answer all my questions, thanks, Chief.
They asked the questions I wanted, so.
Is it a single camera? Does it read all directions?
It'll just do north and south. So there's one camera northbound, one camera's southbound. We do have it in the future, CIP plan to add extra cameras at that location for east and westbound.
Thank you.
Have they had much feedback on how effective it is?
They, so they currently have seven, I believe, deployed within Kansas City. They, it's successful, it's a successful program.
I would think it'd be, yeah, that's awesome.
Chief, thanks.
I've got nothing else to ask, if there's any, oh, one more question, any, by Mr. Reeves? This is placed at that intersection, correct?
Yes.
Is, is it up high off the ground, like on the light, lighting system, or?
Yeah, it'd be up on the light poles.
Okay, I was just worried about if it was sitting beside the road, it might be something that might be taken out by a traffic accident.
It'll be up on the light pole. It's part of what the liability waiver we wanted them to have, in case it fell off or something. They're responsible, not us.
Okay. That's it. Anything else from anyone? Seeing none, I would go ahead and ask the clerk to go ahead and record the vote.
Voting on a motion to approve the city manager to sign and initiate the memorandum of understanding, allowing the Wyandotte County Sheriff's Office to install and operate license plate readers. Blanks?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Chief. Item number three, purchase of a new belt filter press for the wastewater treatment plant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Matt Beetz, Director of Public Works. This is basically a replacement, or it's a second belt press at the wastewater treatment plant, and it'll help assist the current belt press that's in place that was built in in 2009. What we're running into is older press, harder to get parts for, breaks more often. This press is very vital to the whole process of what that plant does. This, when we budgeted for this in our budget for this year, we initially thought, the, we initially thought it was going to cost around $600,000. That was for the whole thing, turnkey, everything, brand new, if we'd had to add power to the room, and all that. Unfortunately, fortunately for us, we don't have to do that. We actually, the building was built with this in mind, having a second press in there. And so it's kind of already, a lot of the plumbing's already in place for it. So that's why you'll see a little bit difference in the price on it. We expect this installation to cost $40,000, $50,000 probably, but, so we should be well in, within budget with purchasing this press. Similar to what we have now, it's just 15 years newer. That process is very corrosive. Everything down there rots over time, and a lot quicker than what we like, but that's kind of what this is, so.
Thank you, Mr. Beetz. Is there anything else from staff? No, thank you. Is there any resident that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a new belt filter press equipment for the wastewater treatment plant from Environmental Process Equipment Company in the amount of $399,735.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gurley, and I, sorry, I heard his voice speak up first, so Mr. Mac, second by Mr. Mac Mahan. So we'll go ahead and start here with you, Mr. Mac Mahan. Questions, comments?
No, thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Gurley?
I like that you said a little under budget. It's $200,000 under budget. That's impressive.
Thank you. No questions.
Thanks, Matt.
Ms. Blanks?
No questions, thanks, Matt.
Ms. Long? Nothing else here? I have nothing else to add. I assume you're expecting that we'll be able to increase, or be able to install that in that 200 grand that's left?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I have a few dollars left in the budget. That's good.
Yeah.
You're making Dolce happy, too.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I would go ahead and ask the clerk to go ahead and record the vote.
Voting on a motion to approve the purchase of a new belt filter press equipment for the wastewater treatment plant from Environmental Process Equipment Company in the amount of $399,735. Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Onto item number four. Thank you, Mr. Beetz. On to item number four, aquatic park concessions operations. Staff?
Hello, Council, Mayor. My name is Nathan Brungard. I'm with the Recreation Department. I am asking you to approve us to authorize a contract with Jarvis Concessions in the amount of $1,600 for the operations of the concession stand at the Bonner Springs Aquatic Park. This means there will be no vending machines there this year, so that'll be a big improvement from last year. I've seen some puzzled looks. We tried vending machines last year. It worked really well for a couple weeks, and then it did not work well the last two weeks. So this is our main shift. The $1,600 is what we would collect in rent. We had two professional bids submitted for this, one from the company before you, and another one from Kona Ice. There was a big difference in what the two organizations were willing to pay us. For this concessions vendor, I was able to contact two of the three references listed, being Lansing and Leavenworth, and they were very happy with their operations at their ballfields. I will take any questions.
Anything else to add by staff? Is there any resident that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign a contract with JV's shaved ice for the operations of Bonner Springs Aquatic Center concessions for, stand for the 2025 season.
Second. Motion by Mr. Shannon, and a second by Mr. Mac Mahan. Go get in there sooner or later, Emily.
I love you.
In fact, we'll go ahead and start with you.
No questions. I'm just excited to have somebody operating this year. I know that makes a big difference, so thank you for getting two bids on that.
Thank you.
Agreed, thank you.
Mr. Reeves? Yeah, well, contractor, have any insurance on their own?